It's seven o'clock. I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. Six out of seven are here. Phil is on an overseas vacation, so he told us about that a while back, and that explains his absence. Flag is over here. We're gonna do the flag salute next. Thanks, everyone. Next on the docket is the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement, and Tom has agreed to read the select portion of that for us tonight.
Okay, under collaborative governance, members of the board and the superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interest of students, modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listening to all perspectives, to all issues brought to the board by individuals and district leadership. The board may only make decisions at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by a board vote. Communication agreements. Board members must follow the chain of responsibility and communicate directly with the superintendent when a question arises, or a concern, or complaint is voiced by a staff member, parent, student, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the student or board chair prior to meetings of the board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of board meetings. When a board member and/or superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any-- he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the board superintendent team as appropriate. In the interest of public transparency and full, robust debate, board members will endeavor to actively engage in and contribute to board discussions and to share their perspectives on topics before the board. Full participation from members in advance of a vote supports the board in making informed, well-considered decisions on important district matters.
Thank you, Tom.
You bet.
All right, we are going to the agenda review now. I will take a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? All right, move vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, and now we are at the consent agenda. Any motions?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Josh?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor.
All right, we have student representatives tonight. First time during this school year. Maddox Fessler and Addison Kruger, can you please come up? Welcome.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name's Addison Kruger. I'm a Silverton High School ASB board representative.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Maddox Fessler. I am also a Silverton High School, Silverton ASB representative, and we have a few things that we'd like to say on behalf of the school. Athletics are off to a great start so far. Our football team is 2-0. Our volleyball team is 4-0. Girls soccer is 1-2 with a tie as well. Boys soccer is 4-0, and cross-country has had two meets and are hosting the Silver Falls Invitational this week.
We have six new exchange students who have joined the Fox family for the school year, which we are super excited about, and we just can't wait to welcome them to our family.
Finally, homecoming is coming up soon. Our theme this year is blockbuster movies. Hallway decorating open house is on Monday, October 9th, from 5 to 7 in the evening, and on Thursday, October 12th, we will have the homecoming parade, future Fox Bear football game, and then at the end of the night, we will have the bonfire. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity to speak, and have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome back.
All right, and next we've got SFVA. A special message from them. Hi, Lori.
Hello. New faces here. It's great to see. My name is Lori Wire, and I'm the new president for SFVA. That's our teachers' union, in case you did not know that. I teach at the high school. I teach ELD. Welcome to our new board members. It's always great to get new people involved and to see how awesome our school district is. I want to share with you a few of the people that you will hear about, that you will learn to get to know as the school year goes on. If you hear these names, you can kind of connect them to their positions on-- in SFVA. Our executive team this year, our vice president is Katie Pantovich. She's at Robert Frost. Our secretary is Emily Rau from Butte Creek, and our treasurer is Jackie Renaud. She is here at the middle school. And all of our schools have-- at one-- most of them have two. The smaller ones will only have one rep, but we have representatives at all of our schools. At Butte Creek, we have Chris Freeman and Emily Rau. Central House, Alice Lazwell. Mark Twain is Aaron Scott and Jennifer Weeken. Pratim is Lisa Freyoff. Robert Frost is Bruce Elliott and Katie Pantovich. Scott Smills is Leah Loughton. Silvercrest, Lydia Sherwood. Victor Point, we don't have anybody at this moment because our rep moved to the high school. She joined us there, so we're in the process of that. The middle school, Sheldon Lazar and Jackie Renaud. And at the high school, Eric Anderson, Abby Shetler, Stacy White, and myself. And John Harrington represents all of our specialists within districts. So hopefully you'll be able to put some faces with names as the school year goes along. SFVA is currently bargaining the peer MOU, which is an alternative pay schedule. It's a whole different program of working and advancing through the pay schedule. We're working on an MOU, which we started in June. So we got some done over the summer. We had a meeting today, very productive. We're hopeful that we will come to a resolution soon and get that solidified. SFVA is pleased to announce our official endorsement of the bond. We were officially approached on Saturday, and we held an emergency meeting of our members Sunday night, took a survey, worked late yesterday, on our breaks today, and we were able to pull it all together with a two-thirds majority vote by four o'clock. So just a crazy quick turnaround, but we were able to do it. We feel strongly that this bond is in the best interest of our students, and it's what they deserve, period. So we look forward to-- we're anxious to see how it all comes out in November, but we're very hopeful that we're able to achieve this. So SFVA is committed to working together with the district and the board this year, and we look forward to interacting with you during our communications meetings and our forum meetings, and then just addressing any issues that should come up this year and come to a united resolution of such. So thank you for your time.
Lori, before you go, I wanted to say thank you for the effort that it took to bring all of the people together, because we all had the fast turnaround too, but it's like one person versus your whole membership. And so thank you so much for the coordination, your whole group. I'm sure there were many hands involved.
That there was. We have a fantastic team, and it works really well together, and I think we pulled off a little bit of a miracle this weekend. That's quite a few people, so two-thirds for majority-- two-thirds majority had to vote on it, so it was a big one.
Thank you so much.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, now it is public comment time. If you would like to speak during public comment, and are attending virtually, use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're attending in person, please approach the public comment table located in front of the board. And I'm gonna read the statement. "We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind: If you wish to speak, raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen, and you likely will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with Silver Falls School District Board Decorum Agreement." Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment?
I almost felt like he was wanting to talk, but he's not here.
Well, there's a second public comment time. Anybody online?
No. No hands raised online.
All right, and we're gonna move on then. Administrator and staff reports. We've got a superintendent's report up first.
Thank you, Jennifer. It's nice to see everyone this evening. I also wanted to say publicly a big thank you to Lori, Lori Wire, for really going above and beyond to call a special meeting with their members and to endorse a bond that has taken five years to this point. Can't thank her and her association enough for that. I want to bring you up to speed on a couple things regarding the bond, and then I want to talk about some follow-up from the presentation that I gave at the board work session, if that's okay. So as you know, we have a measure, 24-486, and that came from Form SEL 803, which was approved by Marion County. And the voter pamphlets, the sections for the voter pamphlets, the bond question, the summary, and explanatory statement have all been submitted and approved. So that's great. We also have a four-page informational document that was submitted to the Secretary of State's office for safe harbor to make sure all of the language is okay, and that's in mid-process right now. We're expecting to get it back at any time. And once we get that back, we will take a look at all of our communications to make sure that they are congruent with that language. And that four-page document will go out as a mailer as well. So a couple of the other things that we're working on. One is we're scheduling PTCC, PTA meetings from now until Election Day. We will start those next week. And Debbie will also be sending out a sign-up. I'd like to bring at least one board member with me, maximum of three, to each session. The more the merrier, also. It's great for our PTCCs to see not just the board member that represents whatever particular constituency in whatever zone. Remember, all board members in SFSD represent the entire district, so it's always great to see multiple faces. We have school open houses going on. Principals have been sharing with us their presentations, and we've been getting actually some good feedback from the community as well, as those are taking place. I will be at the Lions Club at Emmanuel Lutheran Church on September 21st at 7:00, and I want to thank Owen publicly for coming with me on that as well. And then we have some thinking around homecoming week, around the parade, how to get the word out, how to share information, both during the parade and at the football game, and we have a lot of creative thinking around the proximity of the old high school and the middle school, and how best to present that information. So that's more to come there. The school one-pagers are all complete, and those are on the bond website. They were put up last week, so if you want the most updated information for each school regarding the bond as it pertains to each school, you can find those there. It's the most updated, and that's been vetted by our team as well as Wenahaw and a few others. And also, our town, they've agreed to do a series on our schools and every issue. This last issue, we actually made the cover, which is really nice, and they've been doing just a terrific job of representing sort of a day in the life and really getting down to what the issues actually are. So I'd encourage everybody listening, or whoever's listening to this on recording, to check that out. And that will continue up until Election Day as well, so it's really timely. All right, so any questions on that, those updates? Any questions at all? Pretty clear? Okay. So I told you at the board work session that I would come back to you with a couple of things. Number one is the process for selecting members for the bond oversight committee. Number two was the application for selection, and number three is the guiding principles. And so I want to give you a minute to go ahead and pull that up in front of you. You can pull up this presentation. I emailed out the link. I'll give you a minute to pull that up. I think it'll be easier for you. And just look up when you have it, and I'll know you're ready to go. Okay, so as you can see, the visual we put together, pretty straightforward. We will, after tonight, if you see fit to approve the application, we will open a window through September 29th for members of the community to fill out an application and return it to us. You've seen the application. It's been on board book since last week for our public, and you've also seen the guiding principles as well that will feed into that. And then step two will be that the superintendent and team review the qualified applicants after the 29th. And step three, to me, is very important. It's what I want to add to from the last time I spoke to the board about this, and that is, once we have the candidate pool, those individuals that meet the requirements, I will call in board members one at a time so you can see the pool of applicants, and you can give us your input and your best thinking. I want to make sure that you have a chance to do that, that we have your undivided attention. And after that, I will go ahead and submit the proposed list. After we take your input, we'll figure out who will be on the final list, and I will bring that back to you on October 9th for you to approve. And after October 9th, we will go public with who will be representing the bond oversight committee. Any questions on that? Yes, sir.
So I remember our last meeting, we were talking about the individuals we want to make up the bond oversight committee. I haven't seen an update. Do we add the construction expertise?
Yes. Yep. And in my weekly updates, it's been in there. The past two versions, I put that document, the charge, in parentheses, updated.
Sweet.
And so basically what you need from us tonight is just a head nod on what you're showing us right here.
Just your blessing to move forward. And if not, I'd like to know what would need to be fixed or revised so I can-- so we can move forward on that.
The thing that I got, Scott, is this guiding principles, and since being involved with this from the beginning, these are exactly what we heard all the way through, as far as nothing uber fancy, being able to, whatever we build, sustainable, long-lasting. It definitely covered it, so well done.
Thank you, Josh.
So if we have any comments or concerns about the bond oversight committee selection process, now would be the time, because we don't have it as a discussion item later on. We already authorized the superintendent to take charge of the process, so I think he's just looking for general, you know, thumbs up.
Well, you've got my thumbs up.
Thank you, Owen.
Looks good.
Yep.
You okay, Derek?
Looks good.
Okay, thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Any questions on all the information that was just presented? One last? Okay. I want to go into some really good news for just a few minutes, if I can, and that is to talk about the Silver Falls School District preschool. This is new for Silver Falls School District, and we've managed to cobble together different funding sources. And this all started way back in 2020, before I got here in Silver Falls, and Kirsten Jorgensen was the contact person for the preschool promise grant. And we started out running that out of a church. And we then moved it to Mark Twain Elementary, to a classroom there. And this is gonna be the first year that we actually have a facility to house our preschool students. This is the house that's on the high school campus. It's been there for a very long time, and we just needed to make some upgrades to make it suitable for four-year-olds to be in there. And I was over there a couple days ago. It looks outstanding. There are already bark chips put in for the play structure there. And so we have 25 slots, and 18 of them are funded by the Department of Early Literacy, and then seven slots are private pay. And there's a selection process for that. And we-- Leslie, do you want to add any clarification on the second point with how many kiddos that we have two open?
Sure. So we have 25 students total. 18 are through the preschool promise grant, and seven are private pay. So anyone who's interested in attending preschool can apply through the early learning division, fill out the application for the preschool promise slots, and if you don't meet those financial requirements, then you're put on a waitlist, and we contact you on a first-come, first-served basis to fill our private pay slots. And it's a per-month fee. And so we currently have two open slots, because we had applied to get two more preschool promise slots. So we had held those back and not filled them. So right now, my guess is they will fill quickly this week and next week. And we've also articulated this for the first year as a CTE program, so we have two teachers, it's two classrooms, and we have a lead teacher who is actually teaching high school students as well during the day, and they will eventually end their high school program with a certification to work in a daycare or preschool. So it's a really exciting opportunity for our community. And so that's articulated with Shemeketa's early learning, early childhood education program, which we're really super excited about as well. So a lot of worlds coming together for this, and being on the high school campus is, that was really our vision and goal, to get it there so that we could do that CTE component to support our high schoolers as well.
Just another layer to add into our already robust CTE program. We're really proud of our CTE program to begin with, and this is just a really, really nice option that we're able to provide for our students as well.
Leslie, can I ask you to clarify? So that's just two slots altogether that are open?
Open right now.
So the private pays are already filled?
There are two private pay slots open. Five private pay slots have been filled, and the 18 preschool promise slots have all been filled. But anyone can apply at any time during the school year, and if a slot is open, we will contact you.
Got it. I was getting a little teary-eyed during that. This is really exciting. And I wanted to know, Scott, did you take this picture?
Yes.
It's like a heart.
Yes.
That's awesome. I love that.
Isn't that cool?
Yes.
Really cool. And that's for them to ride their little trikes, tricycle things around.
So Leslie, I got a question, because we've been doing, I guess, I've got a five-year-old, a seven-year-old, and now a new one. So like, we've been doing this preschool stuff, and it's been pretty competitive in town, even for the private pay. I'm just kind of curious how many people you had signed up. Like, how many people are we gonna have to turn away, essentially? Because like, I see there's probably gonna be need, that this could be expanded.
Yeah, we did expand this year. We went from 20 slots last year to 25. There are really strict guidelines with the preschool promise grant as far as spacing and adult-to-student staffing ratios, so we've expanded as much as we can in our current site. Right now, I am not sure how many are waitlisted on the preschool promise side. We did have a waitlist last year on the preschool promise side of the grant, but we did have several students move away in the middle of the year, and we were able to start new students pretty immediately. The high school administrators are supervising this program, so our hope is that you'll get to meet the head teacher and have the high school principals report about it during their monthly update.
Leslie, can you speak at all to the days and hours of general operation?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're starting hopefully next week, and we are going to run the full course of the school year and follow the elementary calendar. So it'll be 8:30 to 3 o'clock, school day, just like our elementary schools. We are gonna also offer afternoon care until 5:00 PM for a smaller portion of students, I think for 10 students, because of the staffing ratio. And then we'll be closed for just the holidays that all of the other schools have holidays for.
Thank you.
Question for you. How many students from the high school do we have slots for for the early childhood CTE track?
Right now, we're doing one course, and this is a, it's a buildable course, so you have to start with general things like first aid and CPR and things like that. So it will become, I think, a two-year course eventually, but right now, we're just starting with year one. So no high school students, I think, get the privilege of going out to the preschool until second semester.
But we can have several. It's not just limited to like, three students or four students. We could have 10 students available potentially.
It's a whole class, so I'm not sure how many are in there right now, but it generated a lot of excitement with our high school students.
Awesome. I'm sure people will rotate in, because they're not gonna have 10 kids in there at the same time.
Yeah.
Amazing. And Shemeketa's early childhood program, I've only heard wonderful things about it, so it's really great to be aligned with them.
And then when the students do this through the CTE track, do they come out with a certification in, for a two-year, like, certification through the Shemeketa?
That's our, that's our plan. That's our hope, is that we're articulated with Shemeketa, and so they will, they will end with some certifications, but they will also then be able to continue in the program to get more out of their program.
I'll make a point of order real quick. Just procedurally, if anybody in the audience have any questions for our administrators or the board, please address the chair, and they'll get the right person to answer your questions. Thanks.
Lastly, I just want to go through a huge thank you to some individuals who made this possible. This truly is a monumental occasion that we're offering services to four-year-olds in Silver Falls School District, and we hope to grow from there. But this all started with the grant with Kirsten Jorgensen and Leslie Roach putting their minds together and really visualizing what that program could be, and it just so happened that we had a facility that wasn't being used on the high school campus, and the ideas kind of just flowed from there. So without them, we would not be sitting here celebrating this wonderful, wonderful program. wonderful, wonderful program. The entire facilities department, they really, really busted their tails to make sure that this school is ready and ready on time. Tommy Reedman and the subcontractors, if, had they not hustled, we would be way behind schedule. They really went above and beyond, did everything we asked and more. And when you go to the preschool and I'll, I'll be taking some of you over there, I'm sure on our walkthroughs, you'll see it, it, it really is top notch. And, and for the management, our leadership, Lauren was the one that started it and, and really took a, a house that was uninhabitable in my opinion and, and started working on some of the major things like windows, things like that. So Lauren started it and then Dustin, of course, kept the ball rolling and kept everything organized through completion and through hiring a, an additional or replacement for Lauren, our director, Jeff. And having said that, it's, it's a really exciting thing. Any comments, questions to close this out?
Just, great job. I like seeing the, it located right at the high school, close by. It, it fits well. I love seeing it integrate with the CTE program. I mean, you really can't, and Tommy Reedman's a Silverton alumni too. So it's, it's just everything about it, just, just well done. Just, just perfect. It's perfect. It fits. There was a resource that was kind of unused and what did we do with this? And now it's, it just slotted it perfectly. So, good job everybody.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Turn it back to you, Jennifer.
Okay. Finance and operations report, Steve?
Thank you, Jennifer. Tonight I have on board book for those looking at the agenda as well as hard copies for the, the board members here if you'd like to look at those. The Rome report and general fund financial statement through August. In addition to that, it should be noted, the state quarterly economic forecasts came out on August 30th. And I believe Scott passed Morgan's comments along here. I don't think we, we got that out last week, but another, you know, strong report given, you know, what's happening across the country. Oregon is still stable or slightly growing with the revenue outlook to this point. What it does do is even if there's a downturn with a 20-plus percent, percent state reserve, that the 23, 25 biennium should be, you know, pretty stable from, you know, being able to, you know, promise on the revenue that they've, you know, passed in the legislature. The one thing, of course, that they're, they're pointing out that we've talked about here is the, the birth rate, you know, has, has declined by 10-plus percent in the state of Oregon. In fact, I think we're fifth lowest in the nation right now. And in Oregon, deaths are outpacing births. So, you know, we're seeing that, you know, when we look at the enrollment report, you know, the kindergarten numbers are, I think it's the lowest, lowest class of the 13 grades. So it's not a, not a huge surprise and, you know, something we have to continue to look at. I guess the positive thing is it's not just something that will affect just, just Silverton, but, you know, districts across the state. So, but it's certainly a factor moving forward. In terms of the financial statements, there's usually not a lot to look at until we get to September when the rest of the staff are paid and start getting paid again in September, namely the, the teaching staff. But July is our second largest revenue month. And July and August are our lowest payroll months. So we typically get off to a, a positive start in the cash flow arena. So I did want to reserve most of my comments tonight around the enrollment report, which again you have in front of you. I'm happy to report that we're starting this school year off 69 students higher than last September or close to another 2% jump. As of noon today, we sat at 3,748 students. That does include the two charter schools. Last year, we started at 3,679. I will put an asterisk next to that 3748. We are still in the 10-day window, which is very important to note. Through this week, early next week, students that were rolled over from last year, there's, there's, there's some in this number that haven't shown back up for school yet. They're still a member until they haven't been here for 10 days. So, and the next, this week into early next week, the schools will drop those students. Some of those students have already been dropped because other school districts will request records. And it's our practice that once we receive that request, the office managers will go in and take care of that transaction even before the, the 10 days. So I do expect the 3748 to drop. I can tell you last year, we started at 3,679 and last, and then when I came back in October, it had only dropped by seven. I would expect more of a 10 to 20 student net drop. We do still have students coming in as well. We had a family in our office today. We were helping get registered at, at a couple of our schools. So that, so there's a little in and, and out still happening. So we'll see how it shakes out, but my guess would be somewhere in the 3720 to 3730 range. We did budget ADMR or, or just the true head count without the weighting at 3,700. So I think either way, we're going to come out ahead of that. So we're real, real pleased with that. I think of note, you know, there's, there's three schools that are higher than, than June of 2020, including the high school. You know, the high school hit a low, our low district-wide, and it bottomed out at 3,524 in June of 2022. And you can see the high school actually dipped below 1,200. Well, as of today, they're sitting at 1,300. I do think that it's probably going to end up around 1,290 for them, but, but still, that's a, a nice increase even over where we were in June of this year. So as of right now, we've, we've covered 54% of what we lost during the pandemic. So nice to be over that, that halfway mark there. So I, I will obviously be updating this monthly like I did the last couple of years because it's just, you know, there's, there's been a lot of, as you can see, I have four years represented on this report now. 2020, or the 1920 year, 2020, 21, 22, 22, 23, and now the current. So there's a lot, a lot going on there, but there are material changes and we're just going to, you know, keep closely monitoring those. I think I stated this during the budget process last year, you know, we're going to have to wait until early February to know how the rest of the state's doing unfortunately. That's the other part of this is, you know, what, what are the other districts doing with their enrollment? And we were, we were pleased not only that we recovered close to 40% of our loss last year, but we outpaced most Oregon school districts. So our proportionate share of enrollment to the state was actually much closer to where we used to be because our, our recovery outpaced many other districts. So we'll have to see what happens with the other districts this year and see, and see where we land that way. But that's, that's still a little ways off.
Yeah. So I'm curious about two things. Does Sequoia Falls enrollment fall underneath the umbrella of the high school?
Yes.
Okay. And then do you have any idea of the out-of-district transfers this year? Did we get a pretty significant increase? Because I'm just curious if we're snagging more Salem because I know they've dropped pretty significantly. I wonder if we're getting more of those trying to get in.
We, uh, we will definitely get some transfer data for you for the October meeting because that's still settling. But yes, Heidi, in, in our office, we reported that that transfer activity really picked up even more this summer. Typically, the high school represents about 10% out-of-district students. I don't really think that's changed, but we will get the, and, and we are a heavy net in migration district as far as inter-net, net gain, inter-district transfers. But yes, great question. And we will get that data here for the next meeting.
I think that's something to be thankful for about being a net in, inter-district transfer. So that's awesome. I also love the fact that you knew that a new family was coming in. It's right outside your office and they come in and register. That's a really nice connection that I never really thought about before. So awesome that we have the welcome center at the district office.
Thanks. Leslie's going to comment on the SIA, a part of our finances.
So in July, when I presented, we had expected in August to have the SIA grant agreement as an action item to vote to approve on. I just emailed with my OD contact last week and DOJ is still holding on to our grant agreement. They are holding on to them for the entire state. Right now, no districts have gotten them. So we're just in a holding pattern. I just wanted to let you all know. It is coming. When it comes, I'll add it to an agenda so that you can approve it. But right now, no changes other than we're just waiting.
Thanks, Leslie. All right. So our first discussion item is the superintendent evaluation timeline. We talked last meeting about the draft that Aaron prepared. Aaron took a summary of that discussion and revised the timeline. In addition, we've got the tools that we would need to adopt so that we're all really clear that this is the way we intend this to happen. So now is the time to discuss. Aaron, did you want to?
I'll just make a little quick, yeah, just thanks Jennifer. I'll make a quick comment on the, the, the red lines you see on the draft was based on last meeting and some discussions we've had and between especially myself and Jennifer regarding the targeted feedback survey we worked on last year. As we all know, the, the responder rate and the qualitative data we got out of that was less than ideal compared to the dollars we spent. So this year, we've decided based on the feedback everyone provided last meeting and just looking at it from a fiscal perspective and also the quality of data we're going to get back, again, this is important, that the fact that we didn't get great quality of data back, we're, we're not going to do the targeted feedback survey this year. So the red lines you see basically strike out all items regarding the targeted feedback survey. But the, the rating sheet or rubric we use, which is the Excel file that's, the chart that's attached in the board book, reflect the COSA standards for administrators. That is exactly the same as we used this prior year. So again, the only thing that's changed is removal of the target, targeted feedback survey.
I wanted to just say that I think that we can't maybe make this happen for this year's process, but if we could find an alternative to the targeted feedback survey that gives us the kind of data that we're looking for, I think that we're all probably open to that. It's just that we gotta get this rolling right now. But let's continue to think about other ways that we can maybe get some, some good qualitative data and quantitative data.
So Jennifer, to be clear, we, we are still going to have our individual board evaluation reports we, we will give, but we're not really going to have public feedback at this time right now. We, we are.
Not through the targeted feedback survey. Just because the return on investment was not positive.
The public's always welcome to provide feedback of the superintendent to us at any time. I mean, we're all about giving and receiving feedback, right?
Correct.
So that is always an open door to all of us as board members during the year. So.
Being, that being said, that folks really do need to give us, the whole board, the feedback though. I think that sometimes people cherry pick who they give their feedback to and that doesn't really help anybody. We all have to have the information. So just a little point of clarification there. I do also want to say that there is a, the spot down below where we have the summative evaluation. We did contract with OSBA last year for facilitation of that. And I think I expressed the last meeting that I do think it's important that we have a facilitator for that so that all of us can participate equally. I did contact both Janet Alanack and Jonathan Edmonds and both are willing to step into that role for next year. And I think that we just need to, you know, make the deal with them and, and get the time set up. Either one of them was willing to. So I thought that was a really nice thing for them to offer or to agree to.
And based on that Jennifer, I, I did catch two things. And based on that, it, where it says on, for the 226 meeting and the 36 meeting, the OSBA consultant, I'll, we don't necessarily have to use the OSBA consultant. I'm going to scratch that when I submit the final copy to Debbie and I'll make sure to let you all have the final copy of that red line. So I'm just going to strike out OSBA and just leave it as board and consultants. Because that leaves it open. If we do want to use OSBA, we can, but if we want to use community members, as Jennifer has noted, it's, it's there. It's not just limited to OSBA.
I, I liked the changes. Doesn't, you know, the, the survey wasn't as productive as we want. Good to get that out. And I think just having a local consultant's, his understanding of the personalities in the room will speed that, that process up that we're doing. So I think that's a great way to make it a better process.
I think it's a reasonable solution. I do have a little hesitation. I think again, we talked about the public input being important, but it sounds like with the timeline that we have, just not having a thoughtful way to really extract that. So something I think to keep in mind for next go around. So I think this is a temporary solution for the timeline that we have currently.
I agree. We just have, it just is pretty technical to come up with a process that's going to get us better information. So we'll just keep our thinking caps on and think about a way to move forward with that. Any other comments? Aaron, thank you for your work on being the point person with this process. Let's make sure that, well, I think that you've probably had it. There, there's not much to discuss about the evaluation workbook. That's like the standard for the state and it's, I don't think anybody's had any concerns about that. And last year, I think we were pretty happy with the Excel template. And it works for you?
Okay.
But if anybody wants to make a comment, now's your time. All right. Let's move on then to the board and budget calendar. And I forgot exactly the goal that we have here. Debbie, can you chime in? Like are we, do you want us to decide tonight on what to do with the yellows?
That was the.
That's so cool. Okay. So I'm going to suggest that we do just strike the December work session and the spring break work session. Those are, that's what we usually do anyway. I don't really have a strong feeling about the Memorial Day date.
Could, could we leave that as a, as a TBD as needed potentially for further commending? Or do we, do we want to get it decided on tonight?
I think if we wanted to, we, we just strike it. And if we need to add something back, we can always do that.
Okay.
Well, I'll default to you guys as far as they've been doing this a while as far at what generally would pop up business-wise and be pressing that we may need one. But right now, I'm in agreeance with not having one.
Staff, do we have any concern about that Memorial Day work session?
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah. I know we always cancel a few work sessions, but we're talking three.
This would be three.
Do we think that?
Is there any thought for looking at the spring session? Can, can we do potentially back-to-back? I know that might be asking a lot, but.
Or can we do it on a Tuesday instead of a Monday? That'd be hard.
Are you talking about the Memorial Days?
Yeah.
That would be May.
Shifting it as opposed to. Shifting it as opposed to.
That's fine.
Keep it that week.
Yeah, I think I feel better about that than just, the first two, we always just can't have canceled anyway, so I don't really feel badly about that, but then that, you know, that's a nice compromise, I think, on that third one.
I think Tuesday, I like that.
I like that, too.
Because that was my question, does it always have to be Monday?
No.
Okay.
I'd rather, I'd rather do like a second and fourth in terms of the months personally, and bump it to a Tuesday than do like a second and a third.
That makes a lot of sense to me.
Well, we've done that before, and it's fine, but I agree, same. Any other ideas? All right, seems pretty clear. I'll make this question. Thank you, Debbie. Oh, I did what I am not supposed to do. Sorry.
Do you like this?
No, it's all good. You just, I usually have to open another tab so I can go back easily to the main agenda, and I forgot to do that. All right, what is next? We've got to talk about our second reads. Is that what the next one is? Okay, so second reads. I'm not going to go down the line because we already have had a chance to discuss these ones. So if you have a new comment or concern that has arisen since our last discussion, just feel free to take the floor and speak to those.
Yeah, I've got a comment on the interscholastic activities one. After that last one, I was kind of wrestling with the deletion of sportsmanship, and I was trying to think about why that was. And I think it's some of the traits and principles that we get around the concept of sportsmanship. So I think, for me, growing up playing athletics, being in different activities, the concepts and values of fair play, respect, integrity, respect for your opponent, I think those are intrinsic. I think those are important to encapsulate, and I think if we make a commitment to that, adding some type of language around fair play, teamwork, integrity, respect for your opponent, if you start looking at the bullet points in one and two, it should really help to alleviate that. So I want to put that out there for thought about potentially adding some language in that opening statement where we remove the word sportsmanship to adding something about the values that are, you know, kind of baked into the thought process and traits of sportsmanship, so.
Kind of like deconstructing the values that underpin that maybe it's a little more explicit than the word sportsmanship. I don't have any complaints with that. I think it's hard to argue against. Any other thoughts?
No, I agree. I'm just imagining why they took it out. I'm sure it's because it's to participate in the activities portion, which would be like band, choir.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the word sport there, but, you know, I mean, I agree with Derek wholeheartedly, like, it's just kind of hard to replace that word. So I'm all for it of typically what would be defined as sportsmanship and replacing something there for the type of behavior we'd like to implement with competition.
Fair play competitiveness, something, the descriptors, I think, are what I'm thinking of, Derek.
Yeah, I think for me, fair play, integrity, respect for your opponent, I think that's a big one, whether it's a debate or whether it's athletics. I think those are really important for us to build in still in our young folks, and I think it'll benefit them throughout their lifetime. You know, at some point, you're going to be part of a team, whether it's a school board team or administrative team or interprofessionalized. So I think those values are important to instill, and I think it supports what we're doing in the classroom as well.
Well, Derek, if you want to draft the language, I think that'd be great. Talk to Dan about it.
Yeah, I was supposed to say, yeah, if you wanted to wrap up a couple sentences, a little short paragraph, and figure out where you want to insert it in that opening piece or maybe even stand alone.
Yeah, I'll get that to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Awesome. Okay, somebody tell me what's next, because I did it again.
Public comment.
All right. So if you are, we're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? Go ahead, Gene. We're happy to have you. So Gene, for the record, can you state your name? Go ahead.
My name is Gene Piper. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And do you, and just explain your relationship to the district? Just that you're a citizen.
I'm a member of this community for my entire life. I was the budget committee chairman for about 25 years of this school, of this district.
All right, and are you speaking for just yourself or for a group tonight?
Pardon me?
Are you speaking for yourself or a group tonight?
Well, I'm speaking for myself, but I've had many, many people suggest that I could just come tonight and try to turn the bus around before the cliff, so.
Okay, you got three minutes.
Okay, very good. All right, so in, I also was the, on the task force for the relocation of the high school. My peers elected me to be the chairman twice in '93 and '99. So I'm very versed in what's going on here, but in this facility, this facility right here is terrible acoustics. Never used to be, I didn't think. Somebody painted the acoustical tile, maybe. Anyway, the, when I compare this to Salem, Salem just got through with a $619 million bond. That cost was $14,000 per pupil. We're proposing one for $142 million. That costs us $42,000 per pupil. Silverton is not a rich community. We have people here that we're forgetting about. Our task force had gone out and said, we want, we want, we want, well, let's add this, let's add another gymnasium for this facility, for instance, but not thinking what the repercussion would be. We have people in town that might live in a home that's valued at $500,000. That means their taxes are going to go up $800 in a year. That's hard for them to handle if they have limited income, and we have many of them. We had that David Beeson commented on the last go-around, that people were calling him and say, we have a hard time deciding if we can afford lunch or if we can turn the heat up, and so we're doing this again. And we have just the city, they didn't go for a bond, but they just produced this $20 million project, and that's going to hit them too at about 25 cents a thousand. All of these things are going to add up and make it very difficult for people. I want to, I did get a comment from one of you recent days that said it's too late, but I say it's never too late. In 2010, I received a letter from Marion County Commissioners and the Salem Chariots asking me to be the technical advisor to their task force to decide what they're going to do with the building that was just south, or just north of the courthouse. Five-story brick building, 273,000 square feet. I came on board with the knowledge that it could be saved, and my theory was micro-solutions.
30 seconds.
Fixed, pardon me?
30 seconds left.
My theory is that you fix what needs to be fixed. You don't, you don't try to do the whole thing. The architects proposed doing everything, tearing the building down, putting it back together again. By my method, we got the building saved for $23 million versus the architect's $65 million. So this kind of thinking can be done. I feel that we can fix the old Slater Building. I had three professionals go through it when Andy Belando was still here.
That's time.
So Gene, would you be willing to send us an email with the rest of your thoughts so that we can all have that?
Sure. Okay, anyway, I think we can do better, do some things that really need to be done, but we need to be careful, otherwise it's going to fail. And of course, I'm probably one that will help it fail, but thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are now ready for, to take action on the superintendent evaluation timeline. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the superintendent evaluation timeline.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the superintendent evaluation timeline. Any discussion? All right, let's hope.
Josh?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All in favor?
The next action item is the ratification of the classified CVA. We did have discussion about this a couple meetings ago. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ratification of the classified collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratification of the classified collective bargaining agreement. Any discussion?
Very glad we got this done. Thank you, everybody.
All right, I think that's it. Let's vote.
Josh?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, next is the future agenda item request segment. Is there anything that folks would like to request in public? I'm not hearing any, but of course, you can always give a suggestion to superintendent or myself for consideration. And without objection, being adjourned.
Thank you.